Okay, well, welcome to this public hearing on the inclusion into the agricultural district. It will be held by Public County Legislature. We'll now stand for the pledge. Justice Leno, which is the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
District one, legislator St. Mauer.
Present.
District two, legislator Goldman.
Present.
District three, legislator Admizio.
Present.
District four, legislator Massarino.
Present.
District six, legislator Gross. District seven, legislator Castellano.
Present.
District eight, legislator Laboe.
Present.
District nine, legislator Wright.
Here.
District five, Jim and Albanna.
Yes. Okay, and now Diane Schoenfeld, Legislative Clerk, will read the public notice.
The notice is hereby given that pursuant to Article 258A of the Agriculture and Market Law of the State of New York, Section 303B, that one or more requests have been received by the Putnam County Legislature for inclusion of land in viable agricultural land within Putnam County's certified agricultural district. Further notice is hereby given that the Putnam County Agriculture and Farm Land Protection Board has considered these requests for inclusion and reported that the parcels for inclusion would serve the public interest by assisting in maintaining a viable agricultural industry within the district. Further notice is hereby given that the parcels requested for inclusion are: Town of Putnam Valley, Forest Charlet Horns, Tax map number 85 point dash one dash 24, 39.3 acres; 85 point dash one dash 25, 53.8 acres, total acreage 93.10. Town of Patterson, Robert Mancini, Tax map number 23 point dash two dash 27, 94.37 acres; 23 point dash two dash 32, 32.6 acres; and 34 point dash three dash 63, 31.16 acres, total acreage 168.31. Town of Phillipstown, Colles Spring Farm, Marion and Nicholas Rockwell, Tax map number 31, 38 point dash three dash 25, 85 acres, total acreage 85, total, for a total of 346.41 acres. Further notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April 8th, 2015, at 6:45 in Putnam, in the Pistorre Courthouse, Conlon E. Law, to consider these requests for inclusion and the recommendations of the Putnam County Agriculture and Farm Land Protection Board, by order of the Putnam County Legislature.
Thank you. Now we'll have the public hearing. I just want to leave the procedures for comments. Anyone wishing to speak regarding petitions for inclusion into the agricultural district should come up to the microphone, say your name and the town which they reside. There will be no cross discussion with the members of the legislature. This is our opportunity to hear from the public. If you do have a question, please leave your name and contact information with the clerk and we will get back to you promptly. The members of the Agricultural Board have visited all the parcels and have been requested, all the parcels that have been requested to be included in the agricultural district and have submitted their recommendations as to the inclusions. Anyone who would like to speak, you're on this?
Yes.
Yes, sure.
Hi. My name is Marion Rockwell.
Thank you.
And my husband and I own the 85 acre parcel in Colles Spring. And I filed an application with the county ag board to have the property accepted into the agricultural district. And my application included a complete set of site plans, a veneer drawing, business plan for a horse boarding facility. And the reason why we applied for inclusion to the agricultural district is the reason why the Agricultural and Farm Land Protection Act was created in the first place. I have also been in communication with Dr. Somers, who is head of the Farm Land Protection Board. And without being in the agricultural district, the town treats this whole parcel as if it's a major development project. And it would be very difficult to actually do the agricultural horse boarding facility. And also, I'm going to have some hay fields, and I've already converted some of the property into hay fields and have planted about 40 apple trees for an apple orchard. And I realize that my situation might not be something you see every day, but I have a dream to do something a little bit bigger and something that would be a little bit more lasting and have more impact for future than just myself. I'd like to also state that I'm grateful for the existence of the Farm Protection Act because without it, I would not even have considered this a possibility. And if it's, if you don't seek to include this into the agricultural district, I would probably just continue to try to do whatever I can to develop the property until it's considered feasible, inclusion into the, into the property, into the agricultural district. And if any questions, I'd be happy to address them. I also have the proposals here, I mean, I have the site map.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this time make a motion to close the public hearing. Who else wants to speak? All table.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Good work. Welcome to the regular meeting of Public County Legislature this April 8th, 2015. We'll stand for the pledge allegiance, the pledge of allegiance. I need someone to lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now pray, we pray that our actions and our decisions be in the best interest of our constituents and of our community. Thank you. Roll call.
District one, legislator St. Mauer.
Present.
District two, legislator Goldman.
Present.
District three, legislator Admizio.
Present.
District four, legislator Massarino.
Present.
District five, uh, six, legislator Gross. District seven, legislator Castellano.
Present.
District eight, legislator Laboe.
Present.
District nine, legislator Wright.
Here.
District five, Jim and Albanna.
Here. And now we have our proclamations. April 2015 is Alcohol Awareness Month.
What was on here? Can we do it last in case he comes?
Okay, sure. Move on to the next one. April 2015 is Piers, Influence Piers Month. Barbara, please.
Brian and Buck. How are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you. Piers Influence Piers. Now, we all know that our youth today is very influenced by their friends. Their friends are all important to them. And our youth today struggle with things that we never heard of when we were growing up, especially when I was growing up, probably you too, too. So it's so important that this group, Piers Influence Piers, have done document, award-winning documentary films on things that challenge our children today, like abuse, bullying, alcohol problems, and now the scourge of Putnam and a lot of counties around here of heroin. And let me tell you, the documentary they made this year, Chasing It, is outstanding. And it's been shown all the high schools in the county, I believe even How They.
Yeah, we're working on that, yes.
And when you watch this, you come away a different person, to see what these struggles, these families have gone through and how they've lost their children to this horrible, horrible substance. So I want to congratulate you on work well done. And the county is making Piers Influence Piers Month and hope that this declaration and a joint effort of all agencies and authorities to encourage young people to help others by encouraging them to live safe and happy lives. And that's what it all boils down to, safe and happy lives.
Thank you.
Please, if you want to say a few words.
Yes, well, first of all, I definitely want to thank the legislature because for many years, I think it's like 18 years, you guys have supported us through good times and bad times, when things were tough budget-wise, you were always there for us. And fortunately, this year, we expanded the program thanks to you again. We now have a program, we meet right across the street over here in Spain Building on Thursdays, and we meet in Putnam Valley, and we meet at Bosse's as well. And interestingly enough, you talk about the scourge of heroin, and one of the statistics that we have referred to in the past is that the United States represents 3.5 percent of the world's population. And yet, we use 95 percent of the world's opiate supply. Now, I've said in the past that New York State uses 20 percent of that, which means New York State uses 20 percent almost of the entire world's opiate supply. Two weeks ago, Buck and I were up in Albany, only to find out that that number has changed. It's now 35 percent of the world's opiate supply in New York State. And there's another fact that we came across while working on this, and it's the most pathetic fact, every 19 minutes, someone dies from an overdose of an opiate. So the work we are doing is not over. And we will continue to show the film and gather, one of the things that we do is we gather the resources of the local communities at the viewing of the film so those who have seen the film, been touched and moved by the film, or informed by it, can reach out to those local organizations that'll be present at the film. So thank you so much.
And thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, scary.
Sad.
I know, scary. Okay, next, we have April as Teen Driver Safety Awareness Month. Legislative Massarino.
Good evening. I'd like to invite Sheriff Pete Carver to join me along with the officer that wishes to step forward.
Captain Tom Bellotti, roll call.
Captain Bellotti.
You're covered.
Okay, I'm covered. For the last three years, I've had the honor to present this proclamation proclaiming April as Teen Safety Driver and Awareness Month. Each year, I have requested to do so because it is so important to me on so many levels. With spring in the air and the onset of prom season, it is especially important to raise awareness for our young teen drivers. Automobile accidents to our youth population are the number one cause of death in the United States. Here in Putnam County, we too often experience a tragedy with the death of a teen driver at the wheel. And many of these deaths occur during the spring and summer months. Analysis shows that driver inexperience, unnecessary mistaking, inattentive driving, cell phones, texting, and the use of alcohol and drugs are some of the major causes. Over two decades ago, my niece died in an automobile accident at the hands of a young teen driver under the influence of alcohol. She was only 17 years old. And while she will remain forever young in our hearts, in our minds, we wonder what the path of life would have been had she been given the opportunity to grow into the beautiful woman that we imagine. What career would she have pursued? Would she have been a mom with children of her own today? So many questions and such heartache over a senseless tragedy, yet the conversation remains the same. We know accidents and crash rates can be lowered through education and awareness, through our local police agencies, our school districts, our youth organizations, our churches and synagogues. As I mentioned last year, and I believe it bears repeating, let us never forget the grieving Putnam County families, the moms, dads, grandmas, grandpas, and siblings, whose unbearable heartbreak and in support of those families. Let us heed to preventive measures in memory of those children that died way too soon. And I would just like to read the last resolve of this proclamation, which says, "We resolve that the Putnam County Executive and Putnam County Legislature do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Teen Driver Safety Awareness Month in Putnam County. We encourage all levels of government, our school districts, law enforcement, churches and synagogues, our youth services organizations, and all the citizens of Putnam County to support programs to promote teen driver safety awareness in Putnam County, thereby protecting our most precious, our children, and precious resource with our children and grandchildren." Signed by County Executive Mary Ellen O'Dell and Chairman Carl Albanna.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I may, I have Captain Bellotti here with me.
I'm the head of Sheriff Smith. And gentlemen, the great job you do in the Community Cares Coalition. It really is a tragedy, but again, we're in a digital age now. Texting, you have kids now talk to each other, they text. And you put somebody behind a high horsepower vehicle. We live in a very rural county. You get a little bit of rain, the oil comes up on the road, so it's very dangerous. So we're very, very concerned about that. We do constant compliance checks. We do DWI checks. The captain and the robot row, we work with the town of Conlon, the town of Kent, we're very vigilant, but again, the education is the key. And again, and we live in a great county, but the most horrible thing is going to happen to somebody. You're going to hit a deer. You're not going to be murdered. We live in a very safe county, but the roads are very dangerous. And we have to be very cognizant of that. I want to thank you, legislature.
Thank you.
And Serena, and the county executive and the board for realizing that. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next proclamation will be National Safe Boating Month, which I will present. And we have Charlie Melch here. Charlie?
being an excellent source of relaxation, and whereas however boating to the unprepared can be a risky sport, and the knowledge and skills are important in reducing human error and improving judgment when boating. Be it resolved that Putnam County Executive and Putnam County Legislature do hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 2015 as National Safe Boating Month in Putnam County and the start of the year round effort to promote safe boating. I can say, I've had boated on Lake Maipack, which is our prime lake that we use in Putnam. And I've had the experience of dealing with Charlie on a little boat incident, and it really worked out well. It's good to see our boat patrol on the lake and the people that we have in the community that are really aware of this. And training to the public before they go out is really the key. And fortunately, we do have that in Putnam. Charlie, if you'd like to say a few words in and out.
Yeah, we're very fortunate in Putnam County. We are rich in our bodies of water, and especially with the Heritage River, the Hudson River, which runs along our shoreline, which now has become a major tourism area, which is bringing great tourist dollars into Putnam County. And I am thrilled as being a boater for my whole life and owning Maho Pack Marina for 46 years, that we have the Coast Guard Exhiliary, which patrols our lake and the Hudson River, and the sheriff's department. And it's not a question of that they patrol it, but the level at which they do it. They are out there, they're educating everybody, the sheriff, the Coast Guard Exhiliary, on how to boat safety. And something that's really been in front of our eyes the past couple of years is water safety in general. With all of the swimming areas that we have, with all the small ponds and lakes, it's dramatically important that we talk about basic water safety. And that's something I think we need to keep on our mind. So saying that, whoever would, sheriff or coast guard, we'd like to speak. Thank you.
This is the first year in New York State where there's now a state law that boaters who are 18 and under must take and pass a safe boating class in order to operate a motorized vessel on any body of water. And unfortunately, a lot of people aren't aware of that. And the police will be patrolling, and especially on the Hudson River, because it's been that way for New Jersey for a number of years. And the New Jersey police for sure will pull you over and give you a ticket if you are, number one, if no one has a safe boating license, but if you have someone 18 and under, they will definitely be getting a ticket. And it's just make sure that people have the rudimentary facts that they need to know. Simple things, just plain rules of the road for the water, what to do and what not to do. Nothing Einstein, you don't have to have a PhD, common sense, but if somebody doesn't bring it to your attention, you're not aware of it. And we've been lucky that we've been there five times for what we call a Bogan Award, which is an award where lives were saved. And our flotilla 63 was awarded it, and largely due to this very shy and unassuming gentleman next to me, James D. Palessi, who is our past division commander, and also, he's the lifeblood of the Coast Guard Exhiliary on Lake Maipack.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Sergeant Michael Zabel, commander of our marine unit.
I think the chairman spoke, said it the best, that it's better to educate before there's a problem, and instead of to answer the problem. You know, be proactive instead of reactive. We definitely thank all the county legislators for all their support. Last year, we were here and there was a bit of a debate of how much support we would do, and we were, you guys were behind us 100 percent. I want to say that my connections with the state Parks and Recreations has looked at our county as a model agency as far as our initiatives for safety. And they think that it's great that not only the sheriff's office, but the legislature and everybody supports us working together. We do safety inspections four times throughout the summer, Maipack and Hudson River and Osguana Lake. That's just checking out people's stuff before they even get out on the water on a voluntary basis. We're having three classes this year for the state boater safety class, the one that's required for boaters under 18 years old. This year, we're starting vessel noise inspections on a voluntary basis because we will be enforcing that, especially out on Lake Maipack, for a quality of life issue. July will be our youth life jacket initiative. Last year, we were out there, I think, we were out there handing out some ice cream for any kids wearing life jackets. It was a humongous success. But I mean, I was the most popular guy in Maipack that day. But not only was it a fun day, but it gave us a great opportunity to talk to families about how important it is for their kids to be wearing life jackets, and then the adults too, and any other safety angles that we could throw in there. And I think it's good, it's good business for our county. It's good, safe boating is good business for our county. We try to work with our businesses as much as we can. But having safe boating is good business for us, which brings in better business for them. If people are not having a safe time out there, our lakes are not going to be popular. And that's not what we want. So thank you again. Thank you for all your support.
And you know, let me just say this, we do have the Heritage River, which runs from New York Harbor, which runs all the way down the, our coastline, all the way up into Canada. And the Hudson River is recognized by a lot of Homeland Security people that study this pretty hard, as a conduit for drugs and explosives. So when we have our boats out on the Hudson River doing the patrol work, they're not just doing boating safety, they're protecting our country and our way of life on the Hudson River, because a lot of bad stuff can come down on the river. But they know that we're out there enforcing the law and making spot checks on the boats. And I could tell you, they do make spot checks on boats. My family and I boat on the Hudson River, and we have been stopped and inspected on more than one occasion each year. And I'm proud to be able to say that because boating is safe on the Hudson River, and we're nipping it in the bud. They know there's a good police presence in Putnam County.
I stopped.
Thank you.
April 25th, our safety class on April 25th and May 9th, you can go on putnamsheriff.com to sign up for those. And if anybody want, also on the website is the different boat inspection dates, you can call up me at any time. There's always a marine unit guy working. We will work to your schedule and make it happen for you if those dates don't work out on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say our Coast Guard Exhiliary has been doing this for over 70 years. So great job, and in conjunction with our sheriff's department, we're really on top of things. Thank you very much.
Well, I've only been doing it for 20 years.
20 years? Okay.
It's a partnership with the Coast.
Partnership.
Oh, yeah. I work with Sergeant Zabel, and it's always been a great relationship. Whenever there's a problem, as you know, we're not law enforcement, but we certainly can get law enforcement there if there's a problem. We were involved in an incident years ago on the Lake Maipack where we saw something going on. There were two drunks, and we called, at that time, the police department. They came out, and they arrested the people, and one of them was wanted for manslaughter.
Very good.
It was our calling the police or the sheriff and working with them. So we are a team, and it's a pleasure to work with this man over here. He's a great guy, and so is Peter, and people I know. And of course, Charlie, he's a member of our flotilla, and he's always there for us. But we want to thank you. You did?
You all know that the Coast Guard Exhiliary are volunteers. They go out there because they love this stuff, and they believe in safe boating, and that should be commended.
Well, my background is not only in the Coast Guard Exhiliary. I'm a veteran of the merchant marine, US merchant marine, and the United States Navy. I have served in both. Now, this is the third service I've been working with. But thank you again.
Thank you.
And he served during World War II.
You had to tell him that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Younger everything.
This is Zabel.
Okay, our next proclamation is for National Library Week, April 12th through 28th. Please, please, Admizio.
I would like to invite Jean, and I don't want to mess her name up, and Buske, and Buske. I have to first say that I love libraries. They're probably seeing all of you. They're all the time. So we'd like to recognize the importance of libraries, as they are the hearts and hubs of their communities, and create potential and possibilities within their communities. They provide essential resources, collections, and programs for all ages and demographics. Libraries continuously grow and evolve in meeting the needs of every member of their community. We thank you for that. Librarians are trained professionals who provide their communities with internet access technology training. They offer services also such as job-seeking resources, homework help, retirement planning, literacy classes, and summer reading programs, to name a few. There's a lot more. We are presenting this proclamation and encouraging all county residents to visit their local libraries, to take advantage of the wealth of library resources that our libraries provide. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say thank you very much for all of your support. And also, just encourage everybody, if you haven't been to your library, it's not the same as your grandmother's library. We're very different. We have every, I'm guaranteeing you, there's going to be something that you're going to find that you love there. So come on, talk to us. If you have suggestions, give them to us, because we really are the hubs of the community. We're here to give you what you want. So come and say hi and tell us what it is that you want.
You should say, Michelle is the director.
Michelle Capazella, director of the Maipack Library. I'm like, who is this person?
Hi, I'm Jean Anabasky. I'm not a library director or on staff, or I'm not a trustee, but like everybody else's room, I'm a resident of Putnam County, and I'm an avid library user and supporter. And I have to totally agree with Michelle that... And I have to totally agree with Michelle that it's your support that's really made it possible for libraries to do some of the innovative things they're doing, and just want to thank all of you for, for your backup this year, and, well, your continuing support, because we've had support from you for many, many years, and appreciate it very much. And I would join Michelle in inviting you to come in during National Library Week. If you haven't been in your library lately, you're going to discover some new things, and they're wonderful places, basically sort of the, the crossroads of the community, a wonderful, comfortable, big living room where you can feel right at home. So please come and, and visit your libraries.
And librarians are cool.
And I'm Florence Raddie, trustee from the Kent Public Library, and I just wanted to thank the legislature for their continued support of the libraries in Putnam County. And I wanted to tell you, as everybody else has said, we're not just about books anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is April 2015, as Organ Donation Awareness Month, legislator Wright.
I'd like to ask Stefan Savadlo to come up, and he has a few representatives with him from the Live on New York, Live on New York group. April 2015 is proclaimed by the County of Putnam as Organ Donation Awareness Month. Whereas there is a growing need for organ and tissue donors across our nation, whereas New York has the third highest need for donors, yet only 22 percent of the eligible population over the age of eighteen has registered to become an organ, eye, and tissue donor. And whereas the increased public awareness and education of the lifesaving benefits of organ donation, an increased number of people who enroll in the New York State Donate Life Registry can hopefully be achieved, be it resolved that the Putnam County Executive and the Putnam County Legislature designate the month of April as Organ Donation Awareness Month in Putnam County, duly signed by our county executive and our county legislative chairman. And I'd like to invite Stefan to say a few words on behalf of the organization. Congratulations on the great work that you do.
Thank you very much.
And if you'd introduce your fellow competitors.
It was my pleasure. So first of all, I want to say thank you to the legislature for your support, for your ongoing support, for Putnam County for stepping up, because right now in New York State, we do have a crisis. Every fifteen hours, a New Yorker dies waiting for a lifesaving organ transplant. And those are deaths that are unnecessary, because we do have the means, we have the technology, we have the medical advancement to make that stop. The only thing is sadly, as we heard before, only 22 percent of New Yorkers are registered as organ donors, which puts us at fifty out of fifty states in terms of people registered. The national average is forty-seven percent, yet in New York, we're only 22 percent, so we're pushing the national average down. So I'm really thankful that Putnam County is saying, yes, let's change this, let's make this history. I'm very honored today to be joined by two of Putnam County's residents, two Putnam County originals, Janet Ocasio and Jesse Ann Betcher, who are here, are part of our family, of the Levon family, are advocates for our cause, but are here thanks to organ donation, and I would like you to say a few words.
Sure. I'm a liver transplant recipient. I received a liver sixteen years ago, and because of the organ donor shortage, I waited thirteen years for a liver. And I did not receive my transplant until I was in ICU, and I only had a few weeks to live. And that shouldn't happen to anyone. In, in this country, as the need for organ transplants increases, the organs available for transplant remains static, and it has not grown to keep up with the need. It is really extremely sad to see young people and, and mothers and fathers waiting on a transplant list, not able to get their lifesaving treatment, and not able to move on with their lives. Because of my transplant, I was able to see my children graduate from high school, because I was a young mother at the time. I was able to see my children get married and graduate from college, and I was able to meet my two beautiful grandchildren, and that would not have been possible had I not received that lifesaving gift. So that is why I work with the Transplant Support Organization and with Live On New York to promote organ donation awareness throughout Putnam County and Westchester County, and anywhere where they'll allow me to speak. I'm very grateful to Putnam County for really taking this position and really pushing and advocating for organ donation. I think this is the greatest county in the United States. So I'm very happy to live here, and I'm very happy that, you know, everyone has been so receptive. Thank you.
I'm also a heart transplant recipient, and I know everyone's here on a Wednesday night, and you want to be home having dinner, but I have to say thank you to everyone behind me, because this is allowing us to just get a topic that doesn't get talked about, gets it talked about, and just you guys hearing these words tonight makes a difference, because it's not words that you often hear, organ donation. It almost feels like I'm saying a curse word. So I just want to say thank you for allowing this to be a little more public than it normally is. So thank you.
Putnam County, thanks, Live On New York, and I'd personally like to add that members of my family have been organ recipients, and it's not very often that one human being gets to help another human being with a gift of life. We don't get to achieve that kind of greatness very often, so we should all do a better job at taking advantage of it. Our consumer affairs director, Jeanne O'Leary, want to say something.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I'm here tonight as a personal citizen of Putnam County. I thank you for all you do for the organization, and I applaud the lives that you're living right now. This is very emotional to me. My husband is an ex-pite for a liver. He gave seventy percent to his liver eleven years ago, to his brother. And the reason he had to do that was you were waiting thirteen years, you were in ICU. I don't know your full story, but you have to be that sick. And he actually put his own future, his own health. He's unable to be here tonight, because he's not well, but I'm not going to go into the drama. But I want to say that because there are not enough cadaveric, there are times where people actually have to get a part of their own organ. Okay? So they, you know, there's a lot of sides to this, and there's a bumper sticker, it's my favorite one, it's not a political one, I'm surprised. It's, and it's from one of your organs that you, and it says, "Please do not take your organs to heaven. Heaven knows we need them here on Earth." Okay? And I just ask everybody, I mean, you were fortunate, some families are unfortunate, but you were fortunate to get a cadaveric. But there are circumstances where cadaveric is not available, and people are actually putting themselves in harm's way, position to do no harm, but, and you know, it was through Westchester Medical Center, and we're glad we had the support and all of those things, but he wouldn't have had to do that, and your families wouldn't have to, if in fact, there were enough cadaveric. So again, I'm just asking everybody, please sign that organ donor card, please. And congratulations, and I applaud your life, and I know you live a long, happy time, and may you also, you know, continue to do the good work. Thank you.
Congratulations on you.
And our next proclamation is April is alcohol awareness month. Would you say this for Joe Marra?
Joe DeMarra's not here, so Mike, would you come up?
No, I'm enjoying it.
Could you be the fill-in? April is Alcohol Awareness Month. Now, I can bet that everyone in this room either has a family member, or an acquaintance, or friend that has been touched by alcoholism. I know my family has, and it was awful growing up with that, facing that problem in my family. One out of every twelve adults suffer from alcohol abuse or dependence. Approximately 5,000 youth under the age of 21 die from motor vehicle crashes, as contested with Ginny's statement. It's just tragic. Young people who begin drinking before the age of fifteen are four times more likely to develop alcohol dependence. So let it be resolved that the Putnam County Executive, the Putnam County Legislature do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Alcohol Awareness Month, along with the Putnam County Committees, the Care Coalition, and all substance abuse prevention and treatment providers in Putnam County, encourage all residents to increase their awareness of alcoholism.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
If you don't mind.
I don't know.
I just want, I want to thank county executive and the legislature that have been very supportive through all the years for, to the prevention of alcoholism and substance abuse. And in terms of looking at April as Alcohol Awareness Month, we've looked a lot about the disease of alcoholism and how it takes away a person's life. It takes away their spirit, it takes away their soul, even when they're still alive. But on the contrary side, when a person gets into recovery and, and becomes sober, their life, they imagine what, they attain what their life could only have imagined. And it is, and always when we think about the disease of alcoholism, that we also think about the recovery of alcoholism. That's what Alcohol Awareness Month is all about. So thank you very much for recognizing this.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, for the improvements, a regular meeting March 12, 2015, and a special meeting March 12, 2015. Correspondents, county auditor, and listeners. And next, we have Economic and Development Managing Committee, Chairman Loomin.
Thank you, Chairman Alvano. On behalf of the members of the Economic Development and Energy Committee, legislators Agnesio and Scutimara, I make a motion to move the following items forward. Item number 6A, I would like to get an approval to have a memorialization of the NICE Act, the New York State Association of Counters Resolution, recognizing the vital role that industrial development agencies play in New York State, and affording the important work that IDAs do to create jobs, to encourage economic growth. Discussion? Have a motion? All in favor? Next item, 6B, I would like to have approval for the appointment to the Commission for Fiscal Vision and Accountability, whereas by Resolution Number 173 of 2014, the Putnam County Legislature created a commission for fiscal vision and accountability assisting other members. Also, in 2014, the Resolution Number 173 of 2014, the Putnam County Legislature appointed seven members to that commission. Also, in 2014, the Resolution 344 of 2014, the Putnam County Legislature, Legislature appointed three amendments to that commission. Patricia Plunger had recently accepted the invitation to be the, appointed to the commission and the Economic Development and Energy Committee. She received the approval of said appointments. Now therefore be it resolved that Patricia Plunger, County Patterson, be appointed to the Commission of Fiscal Vision and Accountability. Discussion? All in favor?
It's becoming a very popular committee.
Okay, Rules and Enhancements of Intergovernmental Relations Committee, Chairwoman Agnesio.
Thank you, Chairman Alvano. On behalf of the members of the Rules and Actments Intergovernmental Relations Committee, legislators Gouldman and Scutimara, I make a motion to move the following items. Approval of the reappointment Region Three Fish and Wildlife Management Board. Raymond Merlato, County Patterson, be reappointed as Sportsman Representative for a two-year term, expiring December 31, 2015. And Timothy Keith, County Cornwall, as Sportsman Alternative Representative for a two-year term, to expire December 31, 2015.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Item 6D, the approval and confirmation of the Putnam County Board of Ethics. The Putnam County Legislature confirms the following reappointment to the Board of Ethics, Kathleen Delamere, for a three-year term, expiring December 31, 2017.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, Protective Services Committee. Chairman Gross is now here with a minor illness. Legislative Minister, would you please do the technical force?
Thank you, Chairman Alvano. On behalf of Chairman Roger Gross, myself, and Legislative Loomin, I'd like to move for item 6E, a local law adding a new chapter, 197, to the Putnam County Code by allowing for sparkling devices to be excluded from the dangerous fireworks deposition as permitted by New York State Penal Law Section 40B. Sparkling devices are round-based handheld devices. These devices do not rise into the air, do not fire inserted projectiles into the air, and do not explode or produce an audible cracking type effect. There are four different types, the simple foundation, cone foundation, wooden sparklers, lipstick, and novelties, which require approval from, novelties which do not require approval from the United States Department of Transportation will not be regulated as explosives, provided that they are manufactured and packaged as described below. Whitey poppers and snappers. These proposed lawful sparklers device would be permitted and restricted only to sales between June 1st and July 5th, and December 26th, and January 2nd of each calendar year. All distributors, manufacturers, and retailers must be licensed through the New York State Department of State, and only those eighteen years and older may purchase these products. This is in accordance with Governor Plomo's signed to law, Chapter 477, the laws of 2014, strengthening safety for the provisions in possession of dangerous fireworks. The law also clarifies and recognizes that certain fireworks should not be labeled dangerous. We also have a letter on file from County Executive Mary Ellen Odell in support, and also we have a letter that was vetted through our Protective Services Committee as well, Sheriff Smith. And in that letter, he also recommends and feels that this, this law is appropriate to be adopted, this trying to change. So therefore, I'd like to move this forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Personnel Committee Chairwoman Nasri.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Alvano. Once again, on behalf of myself and legislators Castellano and Wright, I would like to move forward with the approved fairness for the Sheriff's Department for reclassification of title. This is a title change from the Chief Investigator, your criminal investigation, to Criminal Investigations Captain. I'd like to move that forward. This was discussed in detail with the job description being produced by the Commissioner, Director Procel, Paul Eldridge, I'd like to move that forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
The next item, 6G, is approval of a local law to amend Putnam County Charter to provide
procedure for incorporating the salary set for election workers pursuant to Section 3-300 of New York State Election Law. This local law simply brings our charter in compliance with state law as follows. Transfers are setting salaries of election workers from the legislature to the commissioner of elections. Specifies dates from the commissioners of the Board of Elections must act for setting salaries, and specifies the application resolutions enacted by the legislature at the budget adopting, contains specific amounts for these salaries. I'd like to move that forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have Health, Social, Economic, Educational, and Environmental Committee, Chairwoman Scutimara.
Thank you. On behalf of legislators Booth and Gross, I would like to move the following, 46H, I would like to move the following, 4way 6H, approval of budgetary amendment from the Commissioner of Health via allocating a personnel vacancy in the nursing division. The Commissioner of Health has requested a budgetary amendment to reallocate personnel due to a vacancy. He's just moving things around. There's no fiscal impact. Will you address this in audit?
Discussion?
Should we move that forward?
All in favor?
Aye. 6I, approval appointment, Putnam County Board of Health, Dr. Raymond Phillips. And if you read his resume, sure he's pretty amazing. I'd like to move that forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next is 6J, approval of a resolution requesting the New York D E C to implement safety upgrades in transportation of crude oil. Millions of gallons of volatile cooled oil travel through New York every day, right along the Hudson River, over crumbling bridges, through towns and villages. We must protect our communities and ecosystems. With this resolution, we join numerous other counties, Rockland, Orange, Ulster, Hornwall, Newburgh, and others. We need to reduce or to eliminate these risks. Do I ask this being forward?
I'd like to comment on that. I think this is something that's just very, it's not understood. It's a major, major issue that's right in our backyards that most people aren't aware of. And we really have to pay attention to this issue. I think that in the last meeting, we heard somebody talk from, I guess it was the Republican. Somebody said like, out of 3,000 bridges, there's one inspector. And I mean, when you hear stuff like that, you just, it's hard to believe. And I don't know the exact information or numbers, but apparently, this is not really being, then we're not paying attention. We better get on track. So, any other discussion?
And also, I just want to add to that. I support this resolution 100% because one of the other things that were brought to our attention that I didn't know is the type of cars that are transporting the oil also are transporting orange juice. So there's really no safeguards in place, and it's really scary. And that's, a lot of infrastructure work has to be done. We need the state to really enforce these safety issues because if in fact we were to have an explosion, it would be catastrophic, especially for the towns along the Hudson River. And we rely on the Hudson River for tourism. And so it's very, very important. And this is an issue that's just starting to come to the forefront.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The last one, 6K, approval of a grant application to the Commissioner of Social Services. We're required to have legislation approval for all grant applications. This is the $9,000 grant that they're requesting to apply for. And the monies will go to children agri, 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 centers.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Physical Services Committee. Myself and legislator Castellano and Wright. 6L, we have the approval of the SECR regarding the Agricultural District. It's, Putnam County has been declared the agency, and it has been determined that this is a negative deck of its environmental reverse effect on the environment. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
6M, approval inclusion of parcels in the Putnam County Agricultural District. Whereas Resolution 81, 2003, Putnam County Legislature created an agricultural district in Putnam County, county of Putnam. And whereas Resolution 193, 2011, if the eight grand residency of formation of district, Putnam County Legislature modified Set Putnam County Agricultural District 1. And whereas Resolution 244, 2003, Putnam County Legislature established the month of November in which a landlord may request inclusion into Putnam County Agricultural District. And whereas, where presented, were presented to Putnam County Legislature to modify the agricultural district in Putnam County by including the following. County of Putnam Valley, Tax Map Number 85 dot dash 1 dash 24, which is 39 acres of acres. County Patterson, Tax Map 23 dot dash 2, dash 27, 104 acres, 104.47. County Phillips Town Gold Spring Farm, Tax Map 38 dot dash 3 dash 2, 85 acres. County of J5. Whereas pursuant to Article 25 of A, the Agricultural Market Law Section 303B Public Union, a request was conducted by Putnam County Legislature on April 8th, 2015. Whereas the Putnam County Agricultural and Farm Protection Board considered requests for inclusion, reported that the parcels were inclusion, concerned the public interest by assisting and maintaining the vital agricultural industry within the district, and recommended the inclusion of set parcels in the Putnam County Agricultural District. And the two set parcels that were recommended are Tax Map Number 85 dash 1 dash 24, and Tax Map 23 dash 2 dash 27. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
6N is approval of New York State DOT grant agreement with the vibrant bus projects. This is approval of two grants. Basically, it's a 10-state, 10-county. We 80% match with the federal government. And we are agreeing to lay out the parcels and then be reversed at the end of the project. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oui, Administration, Chairman Castellano.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. On behalf of legislators Gross and Nasrino, I'd like to put forward the following. Item 6O is the approval of a budget amendment for the Commissioner of Finance, vacancy control for January and February of 2015. We view this as a time of year to correct our books and put everything in the correct location to zero fiscal impact. I'd like to move it forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
6P is the approval of a budgetary amendment for Commissioner Finance, contract for Putnam County golf income. This is to correct our estimates that were going to exceed this summer. It's a busy season for the golf course. About $220,000 to zero fiscal impact. And we think for Putnam County, because we're estimating we'll receive some sales tax dollars from this, so I'd like to move it forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
6Q is the approval of budgetary amendment for probation, stop DWI Foundation Grant. This is incoming money to Putnam County. And this will help the probation office, which will work with our local police departments and Sheriff's Department to continue enforcing DWI laws and keeping our roads safe in Putnam County. Again, it's a good thing for Putnam County. I'd like to move it forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
6R is the approval of a fund transfer for the Sheriff's Department, corrections overtime. We're moving money to cover costs since we're short a person or two in the corrections facility as to cover some overtime costs. This is zero fiscal impact. We're just moving the money along to pay our employees. And I'd like to move that forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
6S, the approval of local law to amend Chapter 5 of the Putnam County Code entitled Appropriations by adding a new subsection F to Section 5.1. This new subsection reads except for transfers between utilities and gas budget lines. There shall be no item transferred from any utility or gas budget line which include, but not limited to electricity, telephone, heating oil, gasoline, natural gas, and propane without the approval of the Legislature. Again, we're just trying to make sure we're spending money in the right places and keeping everything in mind. I'd like to move it forward.
Discussion, I'd like to make a comment on this. I'll probably be voting no on this because I don't think it goes far enough. Those particular lines, the word is at the end without the approval of the Legislature, which to me is kind of the way it is right now. I think those lines should stay where they are to the end of the year. And if monies need to be moved, we have contingency on other lines. So I think it has the right intention, but it doesn't have enough bite. So for that reason, I'll be voting no. Any other discussion? All in favor? And one no?
You can make that two no's.
Two I agree with your call. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we'll make a three no's.
Okay.
I'll make a four.
All right, we're good. Should we go around one more time? I, yeah, let's spread the discussion before we close. Is that right, Kevin? This way?
I think it's important to move this forward because I don't think it's right to mingle these lines with any other lines for any other purposes. However, if, if you feel that way, I think that maybe we can amend this resolution to take that line out because it is true that if we really accomplish nothing, we still provide that flexibility. And I hate for the Legislature to be put in a position where a transfer comes through and it is perceived by a department to be a very important transfer, and we're torn between the decision to adhere to our own policy or to follow with the request before us. So I think it is very important to have these restrictions and then therefore, it would not be, become an issue of whether or not this is something that comes before us in the future. So if we can respectfully table this or amend this resolution to take out that line, I think it accomplishes the objectives that we are putting forth this evening.
So can I make a motion to amend the resolution? No?
To table.
Right, let's table it.
To, 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 or so.
Yeah, I'd like this. Okay. So I'll second.
I'll second that. Did you make the motion, Carl, to table?
I think Jamie did.
I'll make the motion.
Yes, I'll second. Okay, second.
Otherwise, we would second. So we take a, a vote on it.
Okay.
All in favor? Some motion to table.
Okay.
Legislator Adnizio?
Yes.
Legislator Castellano?
Yes.
Legislator Gouldman?
Yes.
Legislator Gross? Legislator Lobo?
Yes.
Legislator Nasrino?
Yes.
Legislator Scutimara?
Yes.
Legislator Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Alvano?
Yes.
Okay, Item 6T is the approval of a local law to amend Chapter 41, Section 41-5 and Section 41-10A2A of the Code of Putnam County entitled Deposit and Investment. As discussed in the Oui Committee Meeting order last week, this is done by the Commissioner of Finance from time to time, hasn't been done in a number of years, but it does, it means the, the banks and the maximum amount that we can deposit in, in said banks. Again, it's for the benefit of everyone to know where we're putting our money. So that'll move it forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
6U is the approval of support of Putnam County's limited exemption of sales and use tax on purchases of qualified clothing and footwear in, during the week of August 21st through August 30th. Where we can save some sales tax dollars for our residents and people who are shopping in Putnam County. It's a great time to do it as it's before the school rush and certainly, hopefully, we bring more people into Putnam County to spend their money here and we can a little tax rate at the same time. And I'd like to move this forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
6V is the approval of a grant application for IT, GIS Round 4 statewide interoperable communications. I'm going to say that right. Interoperable Communications Grant Program. This is a grant application that's come in front of us. The deadline is fast approaching, and they approached us, and they made a good argument. It's a $3.5 million grant application. And hopefully, the state sees in best interest of Putnam County and wants to take this grant money. So I'm in a motion to move this forward as I think it's a great idea and necessary for Putnam County.
Discussion? All in favor?
Kevin, you'll know my review of my son's principal at the grant for a agency.
6W is the approval of memorialization of Dutchess County Legislature's requesting New York State Legislature to repeal the MTA payroll tax. This is the payroll tax that the businesses in Putnam County like to pay. We feel it's burdensome to the people living in Putnam County. And we'd like to support the Dutchess County Legislature in this month.
Discussion?
So I'd like to make a comment on that.
The legislature have a comment?
No, we'll start with him.
Okay. The last place in the world you want to do is tax payroll. It absolutely makes no sense to me. We should encourage payroll. There's a million other places you can tax if they have to get the money. And I really think that any money that's needed should come from the city, not from them. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 6X, along the same lines, approval of memorialization. Dutchess County Resolution requesting New York State Legislature to repeal the MTA supplement vehicle registration fee and other fees associated. Again, this, we took a quick look at what we pay, and it's over $2 million in the fiscal year of 2013, 2014. And we would ask the State Legislature to repeal this tax. So I'd like to move that forward as well.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
6Y is the approval of litigation settlement that we heard about recently. We have settlement agreement that's discussed and people have known about it. So $1.5 million going back to people of Putnam County for a previous lawsuit that we had, and we paid out. We paid out $4 million and commenced a lawsuit. And we have a settlement agreement in front of us. It's a great thing for Putnam County to get this money back. I'd like to move it forward.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
6Z is the approval of, Z, what is Z? X Y. Is the approval of another litigation settlement we discussed last week in audit in, it's a much lesser amount, but at least we have a settlement agreement. Unless there's any questions, I'd like to move this one forward as well.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, other business? Anyone?
Chairman, on the last two, item 6Y and 6Z, in my short tenure on the Rules Committee, it was my recollection that for the most part, the Rules Committee always reviewed litigation settlements. And I think that's a beneficial procedure. That should, every attempt that we should be made to adhere to that in the future. I understand that there is fiscal impact given appropriate corresponding jurisdiction and order. But the Rules Committee at least historically has exercised jurisdiction and some distinct oversight with regard to litigated matters. And I think it's beneficial that all such settlements go through that committee and such other committees as you deem appropriate.
Ken, so, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, this was a question of county attorney to figure something for the deal. The Legislature's desire to put it before Rules and that's a tough question.
Okay, so that's something.
I guess in the future, it should go.
We should try to keep that in mind. If we think it should go here, to have it on our minds.
Okay. If I could just also add, audit being the last committee meeting of the month, sometimes time is of the essence and it should be in front of audit. I hope the problems with having in Rules and discussing it in other committees as well. In this case, we both went in audit and it was discussed in the meetings.
Well, I think the reason, if I could, through the chair, why legislator Wright brought it up is it gives it, it gives us an opportunity, especially when we're talking about such a fiscal issue, a fiscal issue, that it gives us two chances to discuss it, because it's not always clear. It gives you an opportunity to digest the information. When you get -- when it gets to audit, it's the last round before it comes to the fore. And I think it's really important, not just on this matter, but all matters, that they are appropriated to the right committees, so we have enough time to discuss the issue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. I continue. Okay, recognition of the public. Recognition of the public, all in favor?
You have a right to have someone. We were just driving by. We saw the lights up here.
The timing was right.
Police consolidation round.
No, but it's on a lot of people's minds. Thank you for bringing it up. Close, Suzy. Okay, recognition of legislators? We caught the tail end of the meeting.
If they may, I would just like to post the meeting in memory of Stu Gofford, who passed away recently. He was a postal clerk at the Brewster Post Office, and if anybody ever frequented the Brewster Post Office, he certainly was the friendly face. He was a wonderful, wonderful man. He took a heart attack the other day at the post office and died. I mean, if people in Brewster, South East School District know, the residents of Calisir and Brewster frequently go into the post office, just really loved and adored him. So it's a big loss to our community when somebody like that goes so quickly, and is really part of the fabric of our community. So may he rest in peace when he can. It is a tremendous loss to all of us.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, Gene is adjourned.